Good evening, I'd like to welcome everybody to the December fifteenth Edgefield County Council Called Meeting. We'd like to begin tonight with a word of prayer. I've asked Vice Chairman Talbert if he'd open us in a word of prayer and then I'll lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Dear heaven and Father, so once again we say thank you for such a beautiful day on today. We ask that you be with us and guide us tonight as we conduct this business. Lord Jesus, we did ask that you strengthen everyone on the side of my voice. Strengthen our families, keep us safe from the COVID nineteen and just bless us and guide us and that we will do the right thing. In your name, Lord Jesus, we do pray, amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We're only going to be seated for a minute, we have some... I would entertain a motion to go into an executive session to discuss matters relating to the proposed... I apologize, I would entertain a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
The move, second.
Motion's been made by Councilman Campbell, seconded by Vice Chairman Talbert, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by raising your hand, motion passes unanimously. I would entertain a motion to go into an executive session tonight to discuss matters relating to the proposed location expansion or provisions of services encouraging industry in Edgefield County.
Don't move, Mr. Chairman.
Motion's been made by Vice Chairman Talbert, seconded by Dr. Kenyon, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by raising your hand, motion passes unanimously. We'll be back shortly and Tiffany, we'd love for you to join us tonight as well.
That's on Ted.
And usually we'll be doing that at the end of the meeting. But you don't want to be in an audio file that's got how called an executive session. Well, what it's up to be, whatever he's trying to pick what us talking. I'm sorry. Does the... Is it burning the game? Did they burn them? Oh, they have? Well. They got the pool. Take, you kind of skip something. Well, the file, the audio file is not Chambers folder. It's in that device. You rename it in there and then move it over to the Chambers folder. You don't have to rename, I do that. This purpose because you're having two rooms, you don't need the same name. So this guy. So she's down the road. Minutes and all that she's. Yeah. Even though a girl. Brenda told me a big story. She was honest, she said she'd be the first one. Ted Brown said, I don't know. She'd be the first one elected. Not the first one. Down with it. All the way Supreme Court, the case, the ground law, the case. Back in the forties. So she was. Well, stays in bed is the key. You gotta get it out of the head. Sure, see, that's another one of my cousins is a lawyer. It doesn't practice law. But the, that's when my grandmother was, they had a conservative society and a genealogous society. And they're a person. They got pissed off together. And they were separated. And they've been separated since, up in seventy. The United Department. I'm trying to, kind of working back together because the people, other people in that state, they root for all together. So, so the genealogous society and all of this, all this type of people are all together. They're all in one together, in the whole state. And we have more members than anybody. Even Congress, we've got one hundred, we've got four hundred members. And our genealogous society, even Congress, they've got better cars and winged up a bit. Doing, I mean, by Zoom. Anything by Zoom? Have you done anything by Zoom? I just sent for the mess, calling, brother call. Right here, close to the archives, the sandwich shop. They come on, whatever, they check the mail. It's over there, um, around the twenty, it says it's up. It's right there.
And I passed that sign, and it's Charlotte, my sister-in-law lives in Charlotte.
It's huge. It's huge.
Oh, I'm sure it has to be.
Our class. That's where they, we go, we have a meeting once a month up there. Free COVID. And then when the meetings are over there, we go into the archives and listen to each other. This is pretty cool. Oh, is that right? Where I was when the street came. There was a car on. And I was on Henderson Street, come down, turn back. And when Caroline, every time Caroline dressed up, they'd tear down all the buildings, tear down streets. And that street's long ago. And the department. And maybe it's good, something like that. I'm proud of her, I found she owned. Was she on a buddy?
She, she was. She was not on the road.
No, no.
On the road and she had.
Oh, seriously? She lived out of her way or where she live?
Yeah, she lived, actually she lived, uh, like a, like a, like a, like a, she lived like that.
Really? She doesn't knock on doors after one hundred acres of mountain, ready to knock on first door, he has batteries. He didn't even tell us, I'm murdering my, murdering myself, he didn't tell us he was running from me. He just wanted to put it on his wall. Doesn't make.
A lot.
Yeah. Because some of my cousins, like the mayor of Edsford, my cousins, what do you mean? I go to the county. I do my thing. The attorney for the county, my attorney. And, uh, I'm, and then her, you know, school together, fight back for all the others, this war. I know him. And the other one over there, I don't know. Got on him, the family, not wearing that. The Christmas parade, you know, the guns are canceled, right now. The body of nature can't wait. Just want to feel like everything. You had some rain there? You had some good? But they didn't. Yeah. My mother's been, in her house, since March. My wife and I do a grocery shopping. And she gets her mail, goes out and pulls out, gets her mail, puts it on the floor, straight. And my car, and she totally can't. But she ain't got it. So that's good. Well, my cousin Dennis said, everybody's going to use it, so I'm not wearing that now. I'm a grocery food guy.
Oh, why?
I give the food. Last time I got the food shop, I was, I was down to the food, like three weeks.
The, the thing is with the food. Want to scream? If you take that food, you don't get, you don't get it as well.
I might try again this year, the B A, every time I go to the B A, I want to stick.
But B two is, you get every year.
Okay.
I don't know if that's on purpose or he just got air. It doesn't, it acts like it doesn't have to be the whole, even though. That's true. I want you to, not this year, but before I have all the people, all the people pull up. I want to be around and all kind of shame, shame of being so late. You want to be having all the air and all this. There's the Cooper thing with, um. Yeah, they're gonna make sure the whole vibe is. Oh, that big, big ass house. He had put them down once? He had, um. Some guy was a Russian ambassador.
Was that starting off? I, I could start one.
Sure, no, man, I, I gotta get better than that. He was a Russian ambassador, sorry, or Russian name. And, um, um, he ended up being an entry.
You wanna, you wanna wait for that? That's right. See, I wouldn't necessarily put that, what I do is I don't really attach enough on the need. Like, for example, Chris, the case where they make, so hey, hold the back, you can tell me about it. You're gonna have my tablo. So you just need to assess, what's on your agenda, what are your expectations, what are you going to be, feel, well, like, we don't use it that, I do it through the planning. FTV, like, some computer, you drag something very possible to TV. So I wouldn't put close all the tabs, I'd put close unnecessary tabs. Yeah, there you go. What the, yeah, this is Robo, it's a program. What? Right, so in the YouTube livestream. Up for the video, it will give you a screen key. Screen key, see, copy the screen key. Then you paste that into the streaming settings of OBS. That's right, where it'll say screen key.
Can't be mad now, we've got the, kind of a bracket area. Better three, yeah. Well, that's gonna be something all day long. A lot of crap with doing that.
What I'll plan on doing is. You're gonna learn by doing it.
Send your cards.
What you can do is, for January, for January counts, when you're gonna come, like, do it, just be like I did this. Don't know what to do. Then you can come at five o'clock at the planning commission meeting. For the worst, then you watch me do it, right, it's more experience, just watch me do it, or you could do it for us, right, you just get started and, no, you did it. Just as practice. Of January fourteenth. Where's camp? What we're gonna wait and see is. We can go ahead and do it now, but I suspect, I haven't, I'm interested in another one. I do, I'm gonna do first for January, or February. In the South Island. Yeah, we're just. But we won't either first. Okay, yeah, but we'll, that would, um. Just use their last.
Up in the YouTube? They don't pause, no, or yeah?
Um, the YouTube livestream goes for the whole set, I'll pause audio recordings, there's nothing to record, but. As far as the livestream goes, you wanna keep it up that way, someone turns up to watch it. If it, it's almost safe to see this turned off, they might think it's over.
That makes sense.
Yeah, there's a way to put stuff up there, like, say, where in the executive session, something you've got a special kind of account, page, that's where it's, we did, but, you know, in the executive session, we'll be back.
Now, y'all have a meeting thing on this side, I thought it was just this side that had the table.
They're probably meeting in administration building.
Oh, okay.
That would be my guess, I don't see why they'd be meeting outside. So they probably just went up to office in administration building. I, I don't know either, there might be resources or something up there that need to be, maybe so.
So, we'll find out tonight, what this business is.
Um, it's at the agenda.
See, it's how, that'll probably be agenda.
Yeah, I wanna see it, um.
And they come back.
Yeah, I suspect it might be related to this. It could be entirely separate matter too. Uh, yeah, no, yeah, it is, it's related, I would guess. They make an expo walk with the capsule for this room. Good to have down here. We, we talked, I talked to her, she never did it, but we should put the podium, the lectern speed. It'll work, it was where I can go over there, so. Yeah, I think that'll work, but you need to make sure that, there's a lock over. Hey, I'm here. Didn't y'all lose a pitcher? A pitcher, of water, y'all used to be all water pitchers? It is a chair missing now, but it's not a big deal. They get, there's a chair missing up there, and there's a chair missing out there, I know it, 'cause I know each other, or the number of chairs throughout, one, two, all. What about, you have the plastic ones, and you just easily slide a sheet into it? I just get some of those. They take up less space. Easy to change. Right, well, getting at those, that rather than using a picture frame. Those large, bulky, picture frame holders, they make plastic ones, it's basically just, you slide a piece of paper, it's just a triangle. It'd be cheaper than that, be easier to change, still won't take as much space as that would take. It's not last year. I'm sure that's part of it, I'm trying to help the more this winter for fall. I make sure I wear it when I can, if I wear it fast forward. Things that can give it everything. Really? Really? I think you wanna, it's hard to check off the street, so it would incorporate rather.
They're gonna make us fly open?
Well, if we're going camera, that order is all.
I've been to the smart house, we found that. How about your girl, Sarah?
AD and T, recently, AD and T, recently barker, Google, Google canceled all of its security systems down. Is it, oh, is it AD, not AD, I don't know. If they don't have a smart system.
I haven't been in, kind of, last year.
Some big business smart system. Oh, yeah, it's on my, hey, you got that, Sam? AD's next, uh, yeah, AD's good next. Yeah, it was pretty good.
Yeah, that's always had a good.
I mean, simply say, it's cheap, it's good.
Well, I mean, he could've got pissed off when the people were, um. Oh. Big time, Saturday, Monday, Thursday, everyone, after all, I'm getting better. Man, vegetables, ain't that vegetables? My family used to be, back in the seventies, they were involved, and grand, my, my grandfather was on the town market. Grand, my other grandfather was chairman of the, sort of, whatever, so, 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 they were all very involved, and my father said, it's very hard to get to. And so, um, I figured that, from my dad's, it all was. He very little, hardly appreciate him, he was chilling out. Before I come up, my first was, uh, what's happening, maybe, someone said, we're gonna hang out, so, 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 no. Cause we got, what, four dollars a gallon, you know? I can go to Dollar General, I can, give just about everything I can give at this level, so, you know, amazing stuff, and give my vegetables and meats when it's probably. And, like, I like those, old comedy days, those, um, brain jazz, and, and, and chicken, you know, and so, you can't get those hard anywhere. I think that I raised a lot of chicken, that's good. He said, I hung down, and I said, man, you gotta hang down, so, yeah. Look at that, it doesn't swallow some beans. The one that's got a hung down, and rain, and whatever else, but, yeah. I thought he, yeah, I'm gonna do all of it, for, uh. Not that they're getting, ever getting any good. I'm just keeping that, I do it on all. I grew up on a farm, but, um, my dad was in the military, so we were moving all the way, like, every summer, I come to the school. And going to the grandparents', your own house, first time I spent out in Johnston, with my aunt, and Uncle Jack, and we were made, and they taught me, and depending, that I know about gardening and. They were having peanut, and, you know, that's, uh. Although I've been, used to garden, I didn't, I eat, I did chickens while I was in middle school. They would do chickens together, I did, but, animals were good too. Wasn't signing all their, like, their own, I didn't, go to work on, not on school, um. Have food, no, I had goats, no, they, they didn't grow those too, um. Yeah. See, I told my mom I'm gonna buy a goat. I don't think she's too happy about that, so, yeah. Cause I used to have goats, my grandfather, the ribbit, actually, in the city, that, that seven years, that seven goats, the goats always were down. The name always, only, I think it was, I think it was goat. I did, I had some stuff, that's, um, it's called rock orange. Oh, yeah, yeah. Got a coin like that, and, and, just to go home and try to get through the rock orange, and to get in the woods, there was a challenge, and so, I wanted to go there with you, so. That's what I'm going, I mean, that'd be tough to find, cause I mean, you got that, right? So, I told my, myself, I could get better at the place, and I signed up, cowboys, and whatever, and getting that spirit, too, and getting that goat. Just try it out, I'll bet you thought that was. Chaining up to a tree. See what it'd be for. A lot of them there, because I just got dogs. And, um, masters, not masters, but, um, just your fathers. He's got so many donkeys, and then has so many babies, he gives the babies away. They can't leave that lot. No, it's so cool. And they, they, they're good, I saw one, he's eating some donkey, chicken, chicken, some, you know, but, they, they don't play. That's why I can see that, my time, after, that is still, at least more adulty, donkey, you know, they're like, keep the, keep the, uh, donkeys, you know. So, I need, I need a donkey too, and then a cow, my grandmother, on the other side, used to have cows out there. They saw defenses all that good. But, um, in, in Asia. But the last time, about, um, I was, since I was born, I brought here, my grandmother, and just on and off, keep, keep all the trees built for now, but, as far as, it had, worked in August. Since I retired, some of the white chickens, that, 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 from the town of Asia, so, ninety, ninety. Came here in nineteen ninety-four, and that's, and there, there. That, true? And my grandfather was the C N P there, I don't know, what, 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 yeah, uh, donkey. Well, they used to have a C A P playing out there. This was back when, this was back in the seventies.
Yeah, you can't really, in fact, they often can't build, you can't, you can't need to, uh, thank.
That one?
They can't look over there. But daddy come down there and, um, and they come with us. I mean, kids have to, they're involved in much, so, and they also, uh, can't really. And replace for.
True.
The group, I mean, the whole, I mean, uh, they turned it into, um, so far, well, that, uh, I was, uh.
Well, I took off from there four, three times. And Big John wouldn't, wouldn't let me land, he said, I'll touch him later, so. We'll take it down to, um, how many previous level? Cause, um, I was. I was never good at it, I can't even land it in a simulator on a computer. A crash land. Oh, I got a phone. I take off there, I can pull that thing back and, you know, that's pretty good. I never had it, it's been a long. Cause even after a while, I've got it on C N P. Thank you.
I mean, it's up to, there is two, you're talking about, you have a bunch of information on the, uh. Fire up the train, airport, anything. Uh, I think you've got the call. That one, that one. Kind of tiny, it's that, that we have, I like that round.
They're gonna revise that edge of the district. And they're gonna add section on my grandmother. So it just so happens today, I'm just sending all kind of pictures and information and articles.
Oh, okay.
That section.
Now, who's doing that?
The, 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 the. Raise my, if they said on there that she didn't have a, she didn't carry a gun, that's not true. I think, uh, she had a, a thirty-eight, you don't know about that. She carried a gun, she busted some stills. That's a article for her first month. And when she was, when she took over, her first month, she busted eleven stills. If you're gonna run a sale, you didn't do it last year. This couple, right, she, she lived, uh, she was one of, one of the farm right there in Johnston. She had four sisters, there was four, four daughters, other side.
Four hundred.
Yeah.
That'd be tough to.
Yeah, they were all tough and she met her husband, my grandfather. Um, they were good, when they were putting the reins, twenty-five. George doesn't hear it, twenty-two or twenty-five.
Twenty-five, yeah.
But they were putting that rein in, in the forty. He was on the rein crew. And, um, him and his buddy were at the house and then placed the rent, so together, running from my grandmother. My great grandmother. And then, and they met. My grandfather, grandfather, grandmother met and they got married. He was school shared and he died. He was involved in the loan situation. Loan. Other murders out here. Um, strong family came as sweet cop that, that built our house. Something, you know, good, great in that. That's what I hear. He's sweet cop, maybe, maybe a woman. The, um, they killed eight people, eight or nine, eight or nine people killed. As a result of, um, one family, um, boss kicking and kicking, um. Kicking, hurt them. They were questioning about that. They really like you, you're cheating there. It's a lady man with her, and she was the first and only woman. Electrocuted, that's after a while. And strong family, had a backseat for her. Homeless, nature of the woman. Down to the ground across there, dude. Did it very, nothing.
And he's more than a family, that's what he did in South Carolina.
Where they go do that. What they gonna do with that building out there? Or the urban city. That's it. Well, um, um, Samsung is there, they use the.
That's the same.
And Samsung.
The, the located. To be attractive for you, to break their, their, their located for, um, business, that you factor. Taking.
That right?
I want to do it, or see one. But, but you can get two, these, these warehouses.
Newberry, you were newberry.
That can be a huge, you know, you sort of think that, it would have to.
Wrong.
He does, he has, he has, he has open houses. He has a Samsung, he has a Samsung.
He was, he got that first party. Do you know somebody that do that? He got that building, first built. Down another Ransford project. I'm pretty sure it's all, it's all fixed.
Yeah, it's, 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 it's. For our, our.
The Soul Sound Land for the minions out there. Dominion. This is, please, I'm, I'm laying on my. This is my song. And it's good.
I was on the. That code and then.
Home out there, right?
Yes. We hope you kept yourself entertained. Got a bug.
Here about us all asleep.
Cold and debris. Right. That's the reason why I want this to pass, is the foggy, high glasses.
That's the only reason, though.
Well, it's not the only reason.
All right. Had a long break there. I would entertain a motion to come out of executive session.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Motion's been made by Vice Chairman Talbert, seconded by Dr. Kenyon. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all signify by raising your hand. That motion passes unanimously. First item under new business is, um, consideration of approval of resolution number twenty, twenty-one, eleven thirty-two. Inducement resolution providing for a fee in lieu of tax agreement between Edgefield County and Project Bugle. Um, you all have a copy of the resolution with you. I'll ask the administrator if you'd like to explain it briefly.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. This resolution allows Edgefield County to enter in a fee in lieu of tax agreement, uh, with Project Bugle. Uh, the project. Excuse me. The project agrees to invest a minimum of fifty-seven thousand, fifty-seven million dollars. And create four hundred and fifty new jobs in Edgefield County. In return, the county will enter into an agreement providing the lowest possible mileage rate. And a six percent assessment ratio for the project for a term of thirty years.
Okay, thank you. Entertain a motion of approval of resolution number twenty, twenty-one, eleven thirty-two. Motion's made by Councilman Campbell. And I will second it. Is there any discussion? All right, seeing none, all in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Motion passes unanimously. The second item is, uh, connected but a little different. Consider approval of first reading of ordinance number twenty, twenty-one, seven seventy-six. An ordinance authorizing execution and delivery of a fee and, a fee agreement between Edgefield County, South Carolina. And a company currently identified as Project Bugle, providing for a payment of a fee in lieu of taxes. Special revenue source, special source revenue credits and other matters related there too. Is there anything you'd like to add to that, Mr. Administrator?
Yes, Chairman, this is by title only. And it's for the first reading of the fee in lieu agreement with Project Bugle, uh, that sets out the agreement.
Thank you. Entertain a motion, motion to approve first reading of ordinance number twenty, twenty-one, seven seventy-six.
So move.
Motion is made by Councilman Campbell, seconded by Dr. Kenyon. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Motion passes unanimously. Last item on the agenda is consideration of approval of first reading of ordinance number twenty, twenty-one, seven seventy-seven. An ordinance authorizing the development of a jointly owned and operated industrial business park. In conjunction with Saluda County. Such industrial business park to be geographically located in Edgefield County and established pursuant to section. Four, one, one seventy of the Code of Laws of South Carolina. Ten seventy-six is amended to provide for the expenses of the park, the percentage of revenue applications and the distribution. Of fees in lieu of ad valorem taxation and other matters related there too. It's very similar to every other, um, multi-county park agreement that we're a part of. This time we're contributing to Saluda County. Is there anything you would like to add, Mr. Administrator?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, this is also by title only and is the multi-county, uh, park agreement. It does differ a little bit from the other ones that we've had because we're the host county, which is a good position to be in. Saluda County has agreed to be the non-host county. By being in a multi-county park agreement, uh, it provides certain state incentives, uh, that allows, um, credits for the manufacturing facility.
Thank you. Would entertain a motion to approve first reading of ordinance number twenty, twenty-one, seven seventy-seven.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Motion has been made by Vice Chairman Talbert. And I will second it. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Motion passes unanimously. With that, there is nothing else on the agenda tonight. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move. Seth.
Motion's been made by, uh, Councilman Campbell, seconded by Vice Chairman Talbert. Any discussion? All right, all in favor, please signify by raising your hand. We are adjourned. Thank you all. Y'all have a blessed night.